Susan.
Yeah, it is like six.
Nine hundred and fifty two.
No. Three.
So six hundred.
Two years ago.
Yeah. Whether.
Yeah, it wasn't nice that much, which was nice when it started.
It's. Even if you saw that. You don't have the first two of us.
Yeah.
Is there a lot of people in here? I'm.
This is.
Yeah, that's nice.
So we were.
That's terrific.
Well.
Maybe next year.
Oh. Yeah.
Well, compared to. Was that very sunny before? Or they they maybe four.
Little bit.
Five.
There's there's. Smoke. So it's just being children. I'm sorry. There was there was. There was. I saw. Two.
And we already put in.
There's.
And. But. It's. And well, now the difficult spots.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us on September second. Aaron, did you want to do a roll call?
Yep, Councilmember Reardon.
Here.
Mayor Gunselman. Councilmember Swift. Councilmember Faist.
Here.
And Councilmember Cirque is absent.
If you could please stand and join me for the pledge.
I apply to the. And to the Republic over which stands one nation under a invisible liberty of the justice world. With a new one.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items not appearing on the agenda. Comments may not exceed five minutes in accordance with state law, however, no action or discussion may take place on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. The city council may respond to statements made or questions asked or may ask staff to report back at a future meeting on the matter. Would anyone care to address the council on an item not on the agenda? No. Tom, did you want to go ahead and do the presentation before your report?
Yeah, I'll do it quick. That's.
Okay, so our presentation tonight is from the Sutter Creek.
Sorry, I meant I'll do my report.
Never mind. Tom's first city manager's report. You'll want to hear this, I'm sure.
I was just I was just thinking, you know, should we change it to after presentations? But I guess the reason we're doing the city manager report here is if there are a lot of comments from the public, then we can respond. So anyways. Just some quick updates. Not a lot's happened last two weeks since the last meeting, but I did want to explain why Old Forty-Nine has been closed so long. It was supposed to be closed for a week. It's been five weeks and it should open up at the end of this week. But we've just had a series of things. One of the big ones was the PG and E, the P PG and E utilities are right on top of the sewer line. They're supposed to be, I think, twelve inches apart. So we had to go really slowly to make sure we didn't break anything. We also ran into pipes were encased in concrete under the roadway. So it took more time. Then the contractor had some equipment issues. And then last week, there was an asphalt shortage and they couldn't get the asphalt to finish the road off. But that's that's the last step, so. And again. This is all the good, good news when it's done. We're fixing sewer lines, fixing blockages and leakages with new pipes. This was one of the longest stretches, so we're more than halfway done. The other projects are fairly short. Short lengths.
Tom, does that PG and E placement problem continue into the future or?
It does. I mean, we didn't move. We didn't move their lines. Yes, those gas lines, so. It's the way it is. I mean, it's the way it's built. Some other news, Mason and I got on with the state last week to learn about kind of reporting on the local sales tax and and get our data. So I think we're both up to speed on how to access some of their systems. The good news is we forecasted about one hundred and eighteen thousand for April, May and June. Came in at one forty-five, so it's above the forecast. And so if that continues, we should end up with about one hundred and twenty thousand more dollars than we expected.
Does that indicate that the regular sales tax base is also higher or is it the additional transaction types that we're taxing?
I didn't look at the Mason. Do you have any idea of how the regular sales taxes do? You guys share a mic there.
Um. I mean, the estimates we had on measure P sales tax, there was no historical basis.
No, talking about the Bradley Burns.
Right, but there is historical data that we had on Bradley Burns to make a better projection. So but performance wise on the measure on the Bradley Burns regular sales taxes, it's coming in about what I expected. But measure P, like I said, with no prior basis. We had some HDL data that we used to make estimates, but now that we're actually seeing it come through, I think we'll be able to forecast a little bit better.
So it's probably a lot of the internet sales and.
We saw.
Like that.
We saw a lot of Amazon. I don't know if we're allowed to say.
Yeah, I mean, we did see a lot of online purchasing. We also saw car purchases.
So it provides that level of detail?
It does. It's very confidential.
Yeah, we can't say.
And we could only talk about it in aggregate.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Right.
Yeah, we get the one percent.
Right, so that'll be interesting to see that cumulatively, maybe next quarter or something like that. I'm just curious to see how that is shaping up in terms of online sales versus DMV things and that kind of stuff.
So like a summary by category.
Yeah, summary by category.
Just to clarify, before measure P, Jim, they still you would still pay that sales tax in Sacramento. It would just stay in Sacramento instead of come here.
Right. Yeah, it's not an additional tax when you buy a car. Good point. We also, Will and I have been working to get them on a very general store fixed and we sent out some requests today for letters of support. I think some of the council members were asked to help with that. If you can help do it fairly quickly, like this week, we just want to be ready. We have a couple of weeks, but we want to be ready for the submission. Yeah, there's there's the barn next door and the building and the downspouts.
No, specifically on.
Oh. Yeah, there was an example attached. So we tried to make it easy for folks. Yeah. And then we talked about the reserve policy, which is on the agenda tonight. These are some more, so to need to work on the wastewater treatment plant contract, which should come to you at the next council meeting, September fifteenth. I talked about the 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 INI repairs on the roadways. These are pictures from the Henderson reservoir. Took a little while to get all the sludge kind of pumped out and set up so that we could work. So this kind of bottom picture on the right is the bottom of the valve. That's where the pipe starts that goes through the dam. The hole there on the upper, upper picture. The pipe was also increased case in concrete the whole way through and had to jackhammer through it to get to the pipe. That was a little unexpected.
Do we have any idea now that we've discovered that what the reasoning was behind it?
I don't know. They just really design things to last, but it makes it hard to to get in there. So the other part, you we called all the ranchers that have been getting water from the troughs below the reservoir. They were all willing to work with us to use alternate water sources for a couple of weeks. But as this is taking a little bit longer and the pump around that we thought would restore the water isn't working as well as we'd hoped. We're actually delivering some water just to make sure all the cattle out there have sufficient water.
In the water trucks?
Yeah. And once we saw the condition of the pipe, we were looking to change to a cured and cured in place pipe process instead of slip lining it. And so we're in talks with the Department of Dam Safety to get that approved pretty quickly.
Do any of those things change the scope or the cost?
No, it's actually a little bit cheaper, but then we're delivering some water, so it should come in on budget.
Right.
And then I I had emailed the council, but wanted to announce in the meeting that Sutter Creek was selected for this economic development competition with University of Southern California. So we're one of five cities. We'll we'll be getting grad students to come here and help us with the economic development strategy during the school year, basically. And then, if you guys may have noticed, Seventy-Six Main Street, there's opaque green cover added to the chain link fence there. And then we're talking with the visitor center about putting up some photos of of what the building looked like at various points in time. And just trying to get a look a little bit nicer before a lot of the fall events start.
Tom, when you talked to Jay about that, did he I forget what you said. Did he give any indication what his plans were at this point?
Yeah, I mean, he's trying to rebuild, you know, and that's that's basically what he said.
So his plan is to rebuild a structure similar to what was there?
Yeah, exactly. So.
Interesting.
Yep. And then just some other updates. So we, you know, pretty much finished the weed debatement process for the year. Everybody contacted, responded and cleaned up to satisfactory levels. That was very positive. Everybody in the city is continuing to kind of work with the new software. Mason's going to be doing some training for people to do time cards and things, new system. The pool, pool season has ended and I think Accra did a great job this year and kind of running our running our pool. And then last week, Chief O'Connell and I cooked breakfast for the staff. It's kind of an appreciation. It was kind of a nice event. We did it up in the grammar school.
I, as a pool goer, I have to agree. Accra did a great job this year. There seemed to be a lot more people. All sorts of parents were complimentary of the lifeguards. It went smoothly. Only closed a couple of times, I think, and it was a technical glitch, so very good.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they did a better job just scheduling lifeguards this year.
Yeah.
And then, so we're kind of getting into the big event season. So we have our summer concert in the park this Friday. Six o'clock. On Saturday, the foundry is pouring iron, which they haven't done in a long time. They they fixed their chimney there, which needed some repairs. So if you're into that kind of thing, it should be pretty exciting. And then in October, we have the Scarecrow Festival, the Big Crush, the Car Show, Wine Walk and the Witch's Walk. And then, like I said, next, next council meeting, the wastewater treatment contract will be coming to you. That'll probably be most of the meeting.
You feel like what you've been able to accomplish so far, we're gonna we're gonna meet that date and.
Yeah.
I know it's a lot of work to get through all that and come to agreement on those things.
Yeah, we're very close. We have a couple of items left, so.
Good.
And then coming October, quarterly financial update. We are bringing you some proposed changes to the tree ordinance. The Nexus Study, the consultant had some other issues slipped a little bit, but I'm hoping we can wrap that up in October. And that's about it.
I would question, with regard to the Sutter Creek Ranch development and all the other projects that are going on. How do they already have? Is it called a will serve with AWA?
I don't remember. They definitely are talking to them.
Because I remember, I can't remember how long ago it was, but there was a concern that there was going to be some sort of moratorium with AWA. Are you hearing anything like that or?
I think when Larry was here, he was talking about they have both provisional will serves and then I think they issued the actual will serve once the project is approved. So I think they're in that provisional bucket right now.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Did the public have any questions for Tom? Okay, thanks, Tom. Now we'll have a presentation from the Sutter Creek Business Association.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Council. City staff. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight and give your presentation on the Sutter Creek Business Administration. Before I share some of the feedback I've collected from our members. Excuse me. I'd like to start with a brief update on the association itself. The this year, officers are myself, Greg McLeod, who's the president, Mary Chambers, who is a just a member of the city. She's not necessarily a business owner. She's the vice president. Linda Meadows is secretary. Victoria Botano is treasurer. I am proud to report that our membership has grown significantly. We now have fifty-six members in twenty twenty-five compared to thirty-two last year. That growth speaks volumes about the energy and engagement of our local businesses and and into the community as far as commitments they're making. We continue to hold our meetings on Thursdays of on the first Thursday of each month at eight thirty at the Hotel Sutter. This year, nominations are open for president, vice president, secretary. So we're seeing new leadership opportunities come forward as well, so kind of like new blood. I, as president, I can say that this is my fifth year. You're not supposed to only you're not supposed to do two, two-year terms according to our bylaws, but there wasn't a lot of anybody wanting to step into the position, so I still think it's time for new blood to to kind of head the ship and see where we go from here. Turning to the business climate in town, overall things remain stable. Of course, results vary from business to business, often depending on how much individual advertising and outreaches they do to help support everyone. The business administration has partnered with Taylor Marketing for social media promotion, following the city's example in this area. I'm pleased to see that, say that several of the members also begun using this service to strengthen their own presence on social media. So that seems to be really working out. Kind of as Tom mentioned, some of the highlights that we have coming up is the Scarecrow Festival, which is the whole month of October. Last year was the first year we did it and it really, I think, brought a really nice fall festival feeling to this to downtown city, to downtown Main Street. On October twelfth, we'll be hosting the annual car show. This this will include awards for participation, swag bags, a raffle, a fifty-fifty sale and a close. Of course, plenty of food. In addition to the wonderful restaurants, there will be Motherlode Deli and Armando Tacos will be on the street as well, serving kind of like grab and go food. And this is something in the past. I wouldn't say there was. There's. Restaurants are just to get over that, restaurants are actually welcoming this now because before they didn't want to have food trucks in in town, but they're actually welcoming it because we get so many people in town those days that they get hour and a half, two-hour waits, and then they get bad reviews. And the way reviews go on social media these days, that's the last thing you want. So they're like, yep, bring them in, bring them in, you know, feed the people. So that's all good.
Yeah, that's great.
And then on October twenty-sixth, we're doing the Witch's Walk. This is the second, second year of this event. And it seems like it's really catching fire and hopefully we can continue to do this. This fun event is, it can be families for adults, children, dogs, costume contest for adults, children and pets. It can. It is family friendly. We'll have craft vendors both inside the auditorium and on Main Street. There'll be a dance performance by the Witchers of West Point, live music from the band Triple Threat and a pub crawl with three establishments participating. If you want to, I mean, you don't have to, but that's entirely up to you. And then looking ahead to the holiday season, we have Plaid Friday on November twenty-eighth. The open house is December fifth and second, and of course, the parade of lights is on December thirteenth. As I mentioned earlier, I reached out to all our association members and asked if there was anything they'd like me to share with the council. Whether concerns, issues or even just compliments, I'd like to pass along both the positive feedback as well as some suggestions for improvement. First, the good news, businesses are very appreciative of the city's social media promotion and the use of the marquee in front of City Hall to advertise upcoming events. The visibility really makes a difference. Another highlight from last year was the support we received from the Public Works Department during the Parade of Lights, locating barricades for us to put out. That was a huge, huge help. I personally can thank you for that, since that's basically my job for the parade of lights. Having their help was was, like I said, just a huge, was a big boost and hopefully that participation continues this year. On the improvement side, there were several things that came up. Parking remains a concern with requests for stronger enforcement of time limits. Cleanliness on Main Street was also mentioned. Businesses have noticed that Public Works has had less of a presence there recently compared compared to past years. We'd opt to, we'd also like to open the discussion around permits and auditorium use. For example, does the association really need a permit just to set up a small check-in table for the plaza at the Spring Flank? I mean, in this instance, we had Victoria was there. She had a three-by-three table. And, you know, they wanted her to pay a hundred dollars on a permit just so she could have this table and just for check-in is all. And it's and she was there for like two hours, so that's an example. And while we fully understand that the costs involved in using the auditorium like electricity, we'd ask the city to consider the value of these events. The revenue they generate directly benefits local businesses and in turn the city through tax revenue. A little bit more flexibility or balance here would go a long way. Finally, several, several members mentioned the importance of beautification. There are areas in town that should shine, like in front of City Hall, on both sides of the bridge and near Unique Batique. But instead, they're overrun with weeds. Investing a bit more in landscaping and upkeep would really enhance the image of Sutter Creek for both residents and visitors. In closing, I want to thank you again for your time and your continued partnership with the business community. The association and our members are proud to contribute to the vitality of Sutter Creek, and we look forward to working hand in hand with the city to keep it a vibrant and welcoming place to live, work and visit. Thank you for your time and I would answer any questions if anybody has any at this time.
I just wanted to want to thank you for for coming in and appreciate everything you've done and your feedback is good and it's nice and specific, so it's helpful.
Good.
Yeah.
No, no questions for me, but I second what Dan just said.
Yeah, I third it. It's very helpful and specific. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Public? Okay, thanks, Greg. I agree. It's really helpful to not have to guess. Okay, approval of minutes from August eighteenth.
I have a note on the minutes. My attendance was not recorded on the minutes and it needs to be recorded since I'm required to attend the meetings. I was there.
Got that, Aaron? Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I entertain a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve with the.
Second.
Modification.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is four ayes, Aaron, and one absent. Aaron asked me to do that, so if you guys remind me, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. And we don't have to do roll call with one absentee?
Oh, maybe we do. Oh, no, because she's not zooming.
Cool.
Yeah, okay. Consent agenda, the weed debatement update, that's very positive. I read it. Did anyone have any questions or do you want to approve the consent agenda?
I just had one quick question and Will, I think it's in your your report on that, where it talks about the absentee owner in Florida, I think. But the decision was made because the property here and the property here was cool that we would let this go this year. Is there some? That just seemed a little odd to me because everybody else is complying, but this person isn't. Is there a downside to that? Are we concerned about anything there? I don't know who wants to.
So the issue was we had an incorrect address.
Yes.
So we we reemailed it. We are expecting them to respond.
Okay.
So.
So it's not just.
We weren't letting them off the hook. It was just we needed to restart the fifteen.
The process. Okay, very good. I appreciate it.
If nothing else, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is four ayes, Aaron, one absent.
Way to go. Way to go, Madam Mayor.
Record retention schedule. It's thrilling reading, but I'm very glad that we have one.
Just just to introduce it, I mean, we we are, I think, by law obligated to have a policy and I think one had been worked on, but we couldn't find it ever being adopted. So I'll let Aaron give you an update on what what work he's done on it.
Yeah, so it is something that's required by law. Karen had worked on a draft. In fact, there was a staff report and everything in the file from a meeting in twenty twenty-three. It never went to council. I'm not a hundred percent sure what happened, but so I just took that and revised it into a format that is more readable than the previous versions. Hopefully more usable for the city. The reason why this is important is twofold. One, the policy basically sets out how we retain or, you know, keep our materials, records, and will help us be able to actually enforce that because at the moment we have very little to like kind of back up how and where we, how many, how long we store documents. So the goal is to kind of then, once this is in place, go into our folders and start actually keeping records according to the timelines that are set out. That's important partly too, because then you get public records requests if they if we are actually using our schedule correctly and something, you know, somebody says, I want a record for the last thirty years and we actually only keep them for ten years and we're enforcing our policy, then we only have to get them for ten years. If we have no policy and things are just kind of out there, I mean, Derek maybe can correct me if I'm wrong here, but we would be more liable to have to give more information than if we have a policy in place. And this goes for like electronic and physical. It's applied the same. If we have electronic folders that are archived, we can then like archive them in such a way that they're still there, but no longer part of the public record. Right?
Aaron, it is, it is tedious and painstaking, but thank you. It's good work and, you know, it was fascinating reading. I just. No, but I appreciated what I read.
Well, the next more challenging part is once this is adopted, going into the the storage room on the stage and looking at what's actually there.
Trying to figure out what's what.
It's a little daunting when you actually see some of the.
Thanks for doing.
Places where we have files.
Okay, anything else, guys? Did we need a motion on that? Yes, there's a resolution.
Oh. I move to approve the resolution as presented for uh file retention.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four ayes, Erin, one absent. Uh update to general fund reserve policies. Tom?
Yeah, so um, you know, we had talked when we did the budget that um we should bring a reserve policy to council. And uh when I went back and looked, we actually had adopted a reserve policy last November. Um and as I read through it, um I think it still holds up. Uh the thinking behind it held up. We have two two policies. One is for the general operating reserve, and one is for the total total reserves, which includes capital reserves. Um I did, I did see what I think was a typo. The the both reserves had exactly the same percentages, which doesn't really make sense. Um so this this is proposing that we update the operating reserve to be a minimum of 20% and a maximum of 45%. So again, for both both of these reserve policies, the minimum would say we do not go beyond that, below that amount. If we did, it would take uh three out of five council members to approve it. The idea is you do that in some emergency situation. And on the flip side, if we go above 45%, um it's saying that we're basically saving too much money, and we should allocate it to something, whether that's transferring it into a capital reserve or or doing a project that needs to get done.
Tom, why a 25% spread? It seems like a lot.
It's a lot. I mean, we're a small town. So, you know, you guys can decide during budget season if we're at that upper bound, you know, to to fund some other projects in the budget. Um but
And again, this is the operating one we're talking about?
It's, well, both of them have a maximum.
All right.
Yeah. Um that The other thing that that I realized going through it again, and I tried to explain it here is, you know, in past years, we had essentially accounting was creating various accounts and calling them reserves. Um and we had 10 or 12 of them, but they were all in the general fund. Um and they would be be kind of the equivalent of setting up little savings accounts to save up for projects. And um and generally, that that's okay for accounting. So you would transfer money out of the operating fund into, say, the swimming pool reserve, and then you would do a swimming pool repair, and you'd transfer out of that, and you'd have a bunch of kind of transfers to different accounts. The problem was a lot of these accounts were going negative and staying negative. And um starting with interim city manager, Sandy Spelisi, she started to combine those and get rid of them. And then I continued doing that. Um and so when we were talking about the budget this year, um I kind of made a mistake, and then I was focusing on the one account that's called the operating reserve account. But there are other accounts that are still part of our general fund reserves. And so, you know, Mason and I kind of went over it again in the last couple of weeks. And I think the good news is, I think our reserves are healthier than we thought during budget season. Um and I put, I gave you guys a table there, which kind of summarizes all of them. So, you know, if you take out the capital reserves, um our overall kind of operating reserve is pretty healthy. And I think the other thing that that changed was um the finance department used to have a few more people. And so supporting all these like accounting changes was easier. Uh with Mason doing most of the work, um kind of the strategic level, you can see that the the fund, the money and fund one, the general fund, which is essentially our checking account, if you want to think of it that way, has gone up a lot. And so it's really acting as a reserve as well. So if, yeah, if you could pull up that table, it'd be great. So if you look at fiscal 2022, we had about $270,000 in that fund one. But lately, we've been keeping about a million dollars in fund one. So um it's effectively acting as a reserve. You can kind of see how money has shifted from fund 39 to fund one. So I think it's good news. I think our reserves are healthier uh than we thought. It's just kind of a change in the way we're operating. And happy to answer questions.
You you mentioned uh it would require three to two approval to you go below that fund level?
Yep.
Why did you mention, I mean, three to two is your standard?
Uh, I'm sorry.
You mean, did you mean four to?
I think I meant
Four to one?
Yes.
Requires a super majority kind of thing? Okay. That's what I I thought I saw.
Um, the C uh Road CIP Fund? For 88 and the negative, what's that one?
Yeah, this one we talked about when we were doing the budget. It's the last one that's negative. We're still trying to go back a few years and find out why that is.
Okay.
The reasoning why I'm not clearing it out immediately is because I, this was part of um an auditor adjustment that we had a couple of years ago um before I started. And um I wanted to get more details from the auditors about the nature of the adjustment, and primarily because although the fund is titled Road CIP Fund, I was wondering mainly, was it truly all streets or general fund money, or was this partially due to some enterprise funds that we don't have to put the entire burden on the general fund? Because our general fund is squeezed all the time, so um I don't want the full burden to fall on it if it's not all of it in natural, in nature. So um I'm trying to get a response from them regarding that before I decide to transfer funds in there to zero it out.
I um don't know if it helps, but I remember maybe four years ago, Jim, trying to zero out some of the um leftover negative balance from the bridges. And it's going into one place.
Which I thought we did a long time
Right, but maybe that's why it's negative, because we took it out of that to to do that.
Which, if that's the case, I do believe they had to do some sewer, you know, updates when they repaired that bridge, which tends me, leans me to think that some of that does not fully fall on the general fund. So if that is truly the case, then my hunch is correct, but I need to clarify and just get
Well, and we have the same auditors that you're still working with, so they should be able to help you with that.
Yeah, it's, we have a new one, so I have to go back to the prior one, Vic, but um
It may be appropriate to use measure P funds for a portion of that.
Hmm.
To zero it out.
Well, but we, I mean, I think we want, nature of measure P was for actual
Doing something.
Yeah, we want it for action, not for stuff like that. Granted, if it is from the bridge, that was a great thing that we did, and it was necessary, but
Well, it was a road improvement.
Yeah, absolutely. But um, I mean, I don't think it's for us to say right now. I just, I want more clarification before I decide to move
You'll let us know.
Almost $500,000, you know, it's a lot.
Um, one other question. The uh GFOA that recommends the two to three months of operating reserve. Um, that's what I was trying to think of, Tom, when we were talking the other day. Is that the the main guideline? I mean, that's the, that's the is there any other suggestion that we should be saving more operating?
Well, I don't think so. I mean, it's the main advisory body for accounting standards for government.
There are, there's legislation that comes out from GASB, but I don't know if they give guidelines like this. It's, it's more, GASB is more rules and accounting changes to change policy and procedure, not necessarily guidelines like this, I don't think.
GASB is the one we read about in our audits. Okay. And this would fulfill that as well?
Well, this is, I mean, GFOA provides guidelines, but GASB is more of like um they might require in a next year audit to report on compensated absences. They already do, but let's just use as an example, like what is the liability on our books for vacation? We have, that's, it would, if GASB decides that that's valuable information to provide to the public, they'll require agencies to report that in their audits. That's more of what they do, not necessarily like, there's not a law that says you have to keep X in your, yeah.
I think I just need a little more clarification. I want to make sure that I'm I'm understanding. So on page 25, it's called the General Fund Operating Reserve Policy, yeah? And it talks about a goal of 35 to 45. And then on page 26, it says total general fund, and it talks about a goal of 35 to 45. And in other documents that I'm looking at, it says 20, and what you were saying earlier. So I think there may be some inconsistencies here, or I'm just confused.
This is the one from November.
Yeah, so I attached the old, old one from November that had the mistake in it.
Okay.
And then there's a new one for you guys to adopt tonight with the correction.
Okay. And where's?
Five is the old one. See the date there, November 4?
Thanks, Claire. Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's the deal. Okay, so right. So which one are, so is it 20?
We're suggesting 20 for the operating reserve, and then it would remain 35 for the total, total reserve.
Okay, okay. So general fund operating on page 21 says 20 to 45. That's the whole deal. That's all operating, including, or that's total general.
Correct.
That includes operating?
Yes.
But not capital.
But not capital.
Right.
And then for operating, it's 30 to 45.
For capital?
For capital. Okay. And one of these was the old one, which was incorrect, and that was the basis of my confusion, I think. Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? From the public?
Oh, I had, I had one
From Dan?
I had one more question. Oh, so on the retention policy, it talks about we we only, it gets repaid if we just drop below that minimum. I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. Why wouldn't we want it repaid regardless if we can afford to repay it? Why would we write something into a policy that that gives us the out of not having to repay unless we get below 20%?
Where are you?
I think the idea is that things change year to year. You have things you want to do. So we're specifying a range, and we're staying, we'll maintain it in the range.
Right.
And you know, rather than pick a specific number, I I don't know how you would, you know, if you were in the lower part of the range, again, I think it would be during during budget season, council could say we want to, we want to be more towards the middle.
But I I think
But it's not, it's not picking a specific number as a point. It's, we're trying to pick a range and stay within the range.
I think, well, maybe, again, maybe I'm using the wrong one, but I think on page 25 and 26, I, doesn't it say the retention gets repaid only if we draw draw below the minimum? So that is specifying an amount in my mind. Is it not?
I believe 25 and 26 are the old ones, and I I think the new one is on page 21, starting 21. They look very similar. And I also want
Wait a minute, both 25 and 26 are the old ones? I thought we just said 25 was the old one and 26 was the new one.
No, both 25 and 26 are from the old.
The old one starts on page 23.
So then, in the new one, which is on page 21, what does it say there about paying back?
I mean, it should be the same. It's the same wording, I believe, no?
If it's the same wording, then I have the same concern.
Fair. Um, there is also an item below um about surplus at the year end um that says if the council so decides that we have a surplus for the general fund, we can decide to tuck those funds away to be saved for a later date regardless of the bottom end. Or if it's over 45%, city manager can recommend use of those funds to keep us at or below 45. So it's not saying we can't contribute throughout time.
Right, I think the point is if we do go below, then there's a motivation to bring it back up as quickly as you can. I think that's the point.
That's the emphasis here.
It's a deadline, kind of, we we impose a deadline to pay it back.
I mean, it's kind of hard, again, if
Well
You're trying to like foresee some
Guideline, deadline.
Emergency. Yeah.
But at the time we spent it, spend it, we would be making a plan to repay it. Is what that means?
Yeah. And again, these are policies. I mean, really, you as council can you or a future council can vote to do something different. It's just to
Okay.
Try to set guidelines.
Okay.
Any other questions? Public? Um, before I entertain a motion, I think Jim had put out a um a uh edit, what's the word, to make it a four fifths vote?
Um, I, let me just check it. I think it says four fifths.
Maybe you just misspoke.
No, it says three fifths vote on page 21.
Yeah, it does say three fifths.
Which is all of our votes.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is not extraordinary.
Yeah, so it's up to you guys if you want to make it four fifths, or you want to make it normal.
I think, I like the four fifths.
I do too. That said, I'd entertain a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to adopt the uh general fund operating reserve policy with the change of the four fifths requirement uh per vote for uh going below the 20%.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Um, yeah, excuse my denseness here. But I'm reading page 21, and I'm trying to see, I'm trying to find those words that I found on the other ones about the 20%, and that's when it's, can somebody point me to that, please? I'm just not finding it. Well.
I think the
Any use or to be repaid over a period of time to be determined by city council at the time of voting for approval of usage?
Right.
So it's addressed then.
And then it says if it goes below the minimum threshold, which I think is the phrase you were referring to.
Yeah, that's I guess that's the triggering phrase that is concerning me, because it's only under those conditions that we're able to have that vote if it goes below the minimum threshold. And we may want to have that vote if it's getting close to that. I don't want to be sitting here, you know, two months watching it go down and not have any power to do anything about it until it actually goes below the 20%.
But generally
That's, that's my, that's what I'm arguing about.
But we'll do this, usually it's an annual budget, right? And so at the budget season, we tell you where we expected it to be at the end of the year. And you you know, you could argue it's in the range, and it's okay, or you could say, you know, that's really close to the bottom. I I want to cut something and put more in the reserve. And you would do that as part of the budget. Or, you know, you asked before, isn't that a really wide range? It feels like maybe you feel like the range is too wide, but that's, that's a different decision.
I think that's, I think that's part of my angst.
Do you want to, are you proposing to raise that minimum?
Well, I can live with the minimum. I just don't want to have my hands tied about being able to take action before we hit that minimum. So for instance, on the, in that verbiage, where it says if it goes below the minimum threshold, what if we said something like if council determines that the threshold is, you know, coming too close, or, you know, something where it wasn't, I mean, this is black and white. I mean
What if you set a different percentage that triggered that action, like at 30%?
Or the possibility of that action, yes. I, because I'm not saying that we should absolutely do something.
Sure. But I, but I think, again, I just Sure. But, but I think, again, I just want to be clear, like if you guys approve a budget and if we're, if we're not meeting the budget, we should come to you with budget amendments during the year, right?
I understand, but if we're having a policy written today.
Right.
About these kinds of things, why would we use verbiage that, you know, it doesn't say, oh, you can fix it here and you can fix it there. It says, if it hits the minimum. So why don't we change those words?
But, but it sounds like you're imagining like during the year, we're going below what we told you we were going to do in the budget.
Well, I think it could happen.
But at that case, we should be bringing you a budget amendment and saying. Right. I mean, that's, I think it says that elsewhere, right?
Well, things happen.
The, the other thing I think now that we're talking about it, that we maybe should change and Jerick, you might, I don't, I don't know that it totally matters, but when it, like say, none of us are, none, no one here is sitting in the room and it reads should be used. It's kind of like the, the guidance is that if you have the reserve, it should be used if these things come up. And I think maybe may would be a better word. I don't know if it matters, but it just seems like the should is a directional word versus may would be like conditional upon debate and discussion.
I like that change. From should to may.
Where's that, you guys?
Top of that same paragraph, first, first sentence of the same paragraph.
The general fund operating reserve, I see, should be used.
Cause otherwise it could read like this, if you're.
Yeah, right.
Funny.
Fair enough, fair enough. And, and I appreciate that change also. I would support that change.
I think I understand what Tom's saying though. You know, when we pass the budget, that's the appropriations, you know, that's what we approve them to spend. And if they're going to spend, you know, if we budget $50,000 for a project on a beautification project and it becomes 75, they have to come back to us and say, we're going to take some of that from reserves and we would vote on it. We would, if they're going to take some of that from reserves, which would bring us below 20%. Then we would vote on it with a four fifths vote and have a plan to repay it. That's how I understand it.
Yeah.
Or, you know, a few months ago, when we approved the budget, we looked at the bottom line and we looked at where we were going to have to move some money from reserves to balance the budget. And, you know, that came to us.
Would you be more comfortable if I withdraw the motion and we bring this back? Cause I mean, there's not, this isn't, this isn't an emergency to pass.
I just, I, you know, it's only, for me, it's just this little nagging thing. And if you guys are cool with it and you don't have issues about it, I can go along. It's, it's just, um, I know what everybody's supposed to do and how it's supposed to work. But it, you know.
I guess what I'm, I'm trying to say is uh we, we do what we should do. And if we're not doing what we should do, changing this isn't really changing that, right? In a way, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand what you're, yeah.
If something goes off over budget, we have to make an amendment anyway, right? So there's a protection in that.
Yeah.
Right. But Dan's saying, well, what if you don't do that, but this happens?
Right. I guess maybe, maybe one of the problems I'm having is the 20% and it just seems really low.
Okay. I, I, I think it's kind of low too, but if you, so why, why don't we make it 25%?
Is that doable? It's 25% to.
Yeah.
A reasonable solution?
Hesitate to go much above that, uh, cause again, you're picking a range.
Yep.
So 25 at the bottom.
Yeah. How do you, the rest of you feel about that?
Well, it's 25% of the general fund, you know, the general fund changes too. So the.
Of course.
You know, that amount is going to change. So when we get to the end of a budget season and the, it's 25% of the income?
No, it's 25% of the amount um, that we've specified should be held in reserves. Whatever that amount is.
25% of what number?
Of the annual expenses.
Annual expenses. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So that, that's.
Those are going to change.
Right.
Yeah.
But it just.
You gotta use a percentage though.
I guess it just doesn't, it's funny me saying this. It doesn't seem conservative enough. It just, it just, and you know, I never thought I'd say those words in my life.
I would, I would, I would support the 25, the range to be 45, 25. And that changed the uh, from should to may in the first sentence of that use and
Yeah.
and replenishment of the general reserve, general fund reserve.
So when we have a year, like I don't remember three, what year did we do a ton of stuff? Last year, we did Oremadre and a major project in Sutter Oaks and another road. So our spending was huge. And does that mean we have to?
We don't have to do anything.
No, but the minimum would be 25% of that amount that was spent that year, because this year we're spending significantly less. Do you see how?
Well, it would change on an annual basis. Right.
Right. Last year.
30% of what we spent that year is a lot to hold on to in reserve. You know, that would probably equate to 45% of what we might spend this year. That's a good point.
Gets a little.
So, so if I could summarize, if I could summarize the motion, it would be change the minimum 25%, change should to may and to change it to a four fifths vote.
Well, I'd be interested then to hear you speak, Tom, with regard to the 20%, whether or not you're, you've, where you drive that from and what you think might be better.
It's more conservative to raise it up, but I, I think we're comfortable with 25.
Okay. Well, and it's based off of two to three months of operating. So if the, the lights go off, no checks come in, we could be alive for two to three months is where that 20% comes from, right?
Right.
And again, the total reserves are 35%. So if things really went, went bad, you could pull from those two.
Right. Yeah. No, I, I, I support the changes that we're talking about. I don't, I don't think there's any downside to.
Is that a second? Or to, to the.
Sure. Did, did we motion that?
Well, we changed the original motion. I'm, I'm, I'm.
I think you.
I amended my original motion to include the change from 20% to 25%.
And that other verbiage.
And the shall to may.
Shall.
Yeah.
Should to may.
Should to may.
Right. I would second that motion.
Um, there's a motion and a second. And then I would also say that this is probably something we could revisit, you know, next budget season, if it's like, I mean, thank you for your time, Mason, but um, this wasn't a huge killer staff wise. So, you know, if we're uncomfortable and we come back to the budget, let's talk about it again. Cause the next council could change it anyways. So we might as well refine it till it's, you know, a good guidepost.
Wouldn't require a four fifths vote?
Okay. I think that's it. Ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's four ayes, Aaron. One absent.
Aaron's not going to say it, but maybe a little, little less sarcasm.
I'm just reporting back. That's the way I remember.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Somebody does.
Okay.
Okay. Mayor and council member reports. Susan?
Nothing to report.
Jim?
Uh, just that the uh, the uh, Sutter Creek Fire District Board wanted to express their appreciation for the work that Public Works has done this year in cleaning up some of the areas, particularly up near Sutter Oaks and uh, that we, anyway. Progress is being made and it was appreciated and recognized and appreciated.
That's good to hear. Um, pass that to Dan, guys, since he's not here.
Yeah, right.
Dan?
Just wanted to uh, thank the group for the fireman's ball the other night. That's had a lot of hard work and Claire, you in particular, for all the work you do on that. Thank you.
You got it. It's actually, it's a pleasure. It's hard pleasure, but it's a pleasure.
Yeah.
On that note, one of the next things coming out of that group of people and group of associations is a nonprofit slash volunteer open house at the schoolhouse on October 6th, where um, we are going to invite some Sutter Creek nonprofits to come and set up tables and, you know, inform people on what they do. The idea is not to have people bring their checkbooks and write checks. It's to just have people come and see if there's something that speaks to them, something they're interested in. There's a lot of new people in town who wonder how to get involved. There's a lot of not new people in town that look at these things like the fireman's ball and the duck race and downtown events and want to know how they can get a foot in. So um, that's the idea that Nancy.
Did you say October 6th?
I think I did. Yeah.
Do we have a council member, uh, council meeting that night?
Uh, then it's not October 6th. Hang on a sec. Come back to me. It's not, I, I believe it's during the week. I, I will give you the date in a minute. Um, but that's a general idea. Okay. In uh, city attorneys report? Future agenda items.
On the topic of future agenda items on our, on the agenda.
October 8th. What day of the week is that?
We have under mayor and council member reports, it says to present activities on their, to present updates on their activities and to request items replaced on future agendas. And then we have number 12. This section provides for an opportunity for council members to request items to be added to the agenda in the future with the majority council vote. Seems redundant to have it twice on two different parts of the agenda.
Yeah.
I wholeheartedly agree. I think that's a hangover of that really tedious process we went through.
And I have, I have never once heard us take a vote on whether we were going to have a future agenda item. Yeah.
I mean, I can see why if there's one council member that wants something that everybody else is opposed to, but you want to waste time.
I, then, yeah, fine. Keep it on there, but you might as well then just, just drop it from uh, city
Reports.
Mayor and council member reports.
I mean, we've kind of been taking it as advice and trying to work things in. I mean, if you guys are happy, we can drop it like Jim is saying. But in terms of the process, do you guys want to vote on that or do you want to?
I think we can drop it, include it in our reports. And then, you know, that council member is going to talk to the staff and if you guys determine that it's a giant thing that's gonna, you know, overcome some other things, you've done that before, bring it back to us and say, you guys want us to work on this right now? You know, kick it to a little later or forget about it. And I think that's, that's when we would vote.
Yeah. So we'll kind of make it council member suggestions for agendas. And then if you guys really want something.
Okay.
You can vote on it and say you must do this sort of.
No, I don't, I, I don't say and I dislike the idea of requiring a, a vote because I don't want to waste time on some. So let's keep that in and, and actually do it. That's all I got.
So now I'm confused, Jim. You want to vote when it comes to, so if you brought something up right now that you wanted to put on the agenda, we would vote on it? Cause we wouldn't really have any basis to vote until staff thought.
That was right. No.
Seems like kind of a.
Where, so Mike, you're saying, when would it come up for a vote?
I'm saying if.
The first time it's presented as a, as a suggestion? No, maybe not.
No, staff gets the recommendation, does their staff thing, goes to the appropriate departments. They say, ooh, okay. This is a big deal. It's going to require this, this and this, you know?
Then it would come back.
Then they'd say, hey, guys, you know, we can work on this. It's going to take a significant amount of time. Would you like it to jump the line in front of these things or not? Or, you know, then we direct them.
Okay. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm searching for a, a, a solution where there's no problem solved. You can just drop it.
Well, the.
I just thought, I just thought it was.
Something is our meeting's too short.
Yeah, that's the problem.
We're just trying to extend it.
No, we have an hour.
No.
We get our full rate of pay.
I just thought it was funny that we haven't twice on.
No, I agree. Yeah.
So let's adjourn.
Wait, I have an agenda item idea. I hope we don't have to vote on it right away. So I, I've been looking into these dark sky initiatives and I would like to entertain implementing one. You can do it in a variety of ways and there's really detailed templates put out by Dark Sky International. And just to give a little preface.
I, I think that might already be addressed in our design standards for projects.
Okay.
But I, I'm, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I think it might already be in there.
Okay. Yes. So I will look into that and then.
Down, down lighting is required, not up lighting. And I think that's in there.
I just think it might be a good idea to, I didn't realize that and that's good to know, but to look into it. Um, and they have also that it's, they have templates that are can serve as a valuable promotional material for tourism. And as we're looking at these developments, I think it'd be a good thing to make sure that we don't create a whole lot of light pollution.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check it out and see if it's in there.
Thank you.
And then there is a piece of correspondence that came in today, uh, which you guys have at places. Uh, where the, the gentleman that runs the ragtime festival is basically willing to donate money and help raise money to put air conditioning in the auditorium.
It's pretty terrific.
That's a very generous offer and I think you should come back with the, it looks, maybe you already have looked at some numbers or.
Yeah, no, we're good.
You plan on doing some investigation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's some other groups and individuals that would help put money into that pot. Um, maybe even it's a idea for the, the main beneficiary of the duck race next year, especially if the Monteverdi wall gets fixed. Okay. Is that all? We're adjourned.
Hey, Greg.